To the January 8, 2019, meeting of the planning board, I wish everyone a happy new year. Hope everyone had good holidays. We have a somewhat limited agenda, not to say that the topic is limited, but we have two primary items, continuances of two public hearings. But in terms of internal stuff, if we could take care of a few things, we have pretty, I guess everything's simple today, a bill for $7.20 for an office stamp. I don't know if folks have had a chance to see that, but if there's any question or discussion.
I didn't see it.
Okay.
That's the next page.
I'm sorry?
The schedule's the next page.
Yeah, that's not part of that one. And there's also a bill for $47.99 for business cards for our newest addition to the staff office. Again, I'll let people take a look at that, and when and if you're ready, I would entertain a motion for approval. And forgive me, I just realized we're missing two people. I knew that Orin wasn't going to be here. Do we know if Steve is going to?
He didn't, he did not communicate to me that he wouldn't be here.
Okay. Wait a few minutes and see if he's here. In the interim, any wish for action on these two minutes, uh, two bill schedules?
I'll move to approve the two bills and warrants in the amounts of $7.20 to WB Mason and $47.99 for Vista Prince as presented.
Is there any further discussion? Excuse me, is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Steve's here.
All right, good. Next item on the agenda are the minutes for December 18th. We will make this.
Yes, we did make a, an addition that's in your packet that identified that with the discussion, we were taking up Blue Star's number seven, that there was no discussion after the hearing was opened and that it, there was an immediate motion to continue to tonight.
Paul, is the name of the solar firm correct in those minutes? Next Sun?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments, corrections, or discussion on the December 18th minutes? And if there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the December 18th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussions? I think everyone's here, so there's no abstentions. Okay. Guess we're right on time. Next item on the agenda is a continuance of the special permit for number 479 for Blue Star Business Park. Mark, if you're ready to go.
Again, Mark Dibb, Civil Engineer with Condyne Engineering Group, just bringing up to date where we are and what we've been able to accomplish since the last meeting. So at the last meeting, we, the consultant was here with us and we went thoroughly went through our response to comments. They made some general comments that we were essentially meeting stormwater standards with some minor, just detail work. And we did receive some correspondence from Paul and Jennifer last, on the 20th, requesting for this special permit applications, buildings one through five, we, requesting the summary of performance standards and the wetlands impacts. We provided that on the 21st of December via the narrative, that, an updated narrative. It basically outlined how we met the wetland performance standards for the project for buildings one through five, identifying the BVW performance standard, the floodplain, and the riverfront area. And I can go into that detail, but I'm not sure if you want to hear that. I do know the consultant is here, that we have not received a follow-up correspondence regarding that submittal, but they might have additional information. And we also met with Paul and Chris Carmichael, Building Inspector. We've agreed to revise the common driveways up to 36 feet. Both Chris and Paul are in agreement that that's a good width to work with on this project. So this, this road will be 36 feet wide, as well as this access will be 36 feet wide instead of the 30 we've had. We continue to understand that any major change of use for the front buildings, you know, we just need to make sure parking meets the zoning of whatever that use will be. And we continue to discuss this access path right here. With, with a crosswalk, in reality, it doesn't serve much purpose. We, I've actually had some discussions with Conservation to create an actual gravel parking lot to, for public use and then, and bring that walkway all the way down for Canoe River Access, where, you know, three or four parking spaces, just like a conservation, actual parking space that can really be used as something functional and achieve a goal. And that would be in lieu of this walkway, which provides access, basically, since we're restricted on widening Leonard Street, it doesn't provide access to anything. So there'd still be access for these people to, to get to, out to the retail, but that recreational use that we could achieve with an actual small parking area seemed to benefit everybody better. So we're pursuing that change, but either way, you know, I think it's a, it is some access, but we feel that that is a better approach to provide some access down, all the way down to Canoe River.
So would you still have that path in the front of that building?
We would actually remove the path from, from this point over. So it'd be strictly a, more of a access. And, I mean, users of the building will even have access around, but the actual conservation demarcated, if it's through some kind of small conservation mapping, whatever, however we achieve that, we'll call out this being the point. This, I mean, it ends here, it doesn't even connect to building seven, which we'll be talking about later. And again, we're just constrained by wetlands on both sides of Leonard, so we can't achieve a walkway, you know, between this point and here, and we can't achieve a walkway over to the future Phase Two, so.
Yeah.
We're just trying to provide about, just a better use for, for that type of thing.
Ballpark, how far would it be from the parking lot to the river?
Um.
Ish?
About, I don't have that exactly, but 1,200 to 1,600 feet.
Okay.
It's a pretty significant.
Quarter mile.
Yeah.
It's a fairly flat area.
Yeah.
So it's a very, you know, very accessible.
Yeah.
Gives opportunities for the public then to have access to an area, a natural area where they currently don't, so.
We're.
Formally, anyway, so.
There is even a covered structure, there's no, that's in very good shape, we could, it could even stay, you know, there's a shed that's, needs to be removed, but, you know, so there's, there's ways to actually make it a real good use. That's a benefit to everybody. So that's basically what we've done for buildings one through five. We have not received any follow-up review letters, but do believe the consultants here, so maybe they have input on the performance standards that we're looking at.
With that said, I believe it's Janet Bernardo?
Yeah, um, the performance standards of the wetland.
Jan, I'm sorry, can we?
Okay, really, Conservation Commission response, so we have not completed that, that's a review that we were planning on providing to the Conservation Commission. So you'll get a copy at that time, but Amy Ball will be providing that information.
All right, and actually, I'd pose this question to both you and, and Mark. Are folks satisfied with the review of stormwater? I know that that may, or may not be affected by decisions of the Conservation Commission.
So my understanding at the, that, from the last meeting, the applicant was going to provide some information about the 100-year flood coming down Canoe River and how their design was an off, off peak of that. Is that happening?
Um.
So I do have, like, from the, from their response to us, that was maybe December, it's like I have, I have it on, maybe it's this December 7?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a December 7th, but a letter that came regarding the stormwater, your response to that. And December 7, the other, the response to comment regarding stormwater. I have gone through that and I have a few items, like that the subsurface infiltration systems have not been labeled properly, and there's a few minor edits for the hydroCAD calculations, like there's a weir and it should be a pipe, and that kind of information that I have not provided to them yet because I was expecting to get something else. So if I'm not going to get anything else, I can provide that, you know, minor tweaks to their calculations, but I was thinking that there was going to be a response regarding the Canoe River aquifer and that floodplain and how that was impacting their infiltration basis to the southern portion of the site. So that's why.
My understanding of that was inaccurate, that nothing else was being provided. Your president was here at the last meeting, and he said the site is well downriver, control of the site, 100-year storm is not necessary.
So is that how the board felt? Cause I.
And we agree that there was going to be some back and forth on cleanup of minor items.
Okay.
Between the two sets of plans.
Okay, and so then, when I had spoken to town staff, I thought I was on hold for a little bit on actually giving that cleanup pieces. But I have it and I can, I can provide that to them. It's, it's, so there are some tweaks, but they're relatively minor. It should not change the sizes of their systems. It's more adding details for construction purposes and making sure that everything is comfortable. I think Conservation Commission is going to be very concerned, so they are looking for a presentation on December, on January 28th regarding the stormwater design. So I think as far as this board is concerned, maybe stormwater is, can not be a further concern, but I would hold off for Conservation Commission to also agree with that. Does that make sense?
Yes. Unless there are questions, comments from the board.
I do recall some discussion about a narrative about how the floodplain, how the flooding would be out of phase with the actual rainfall event.
Yeah, that's what I was expecting.
Probably they're using the wrong terminology, but.
I.
However, that was, I do remember discussion about that at the previous.
My understanding was we were going to receive the follow-up review letter that stated, your review letter was going to state the, this 100-year flood scenario, and then we would, as a response to that, be our final. But we both agreed that it should not, even agreed that we didn't even have to, to any longer design to the 100-year event because of, you know, it even went that far.
Yeah, no, but is anything changing because of that?
Uh, no.
So that's, then that was another, I know that, that was kind of where we were imagining this was headed, that because the 100-year peak flow from this project would be off of the peak, so it won't impact the peak and, you know, they're not going to hit at the same time, that in theory, this could be reduced in size. So if that also is not happening, I just want to make sure that the design, as it stands, is not changing before I go through my process. It's, no, it's not changing. So then I can get them that letter. I mean, it's just a few changes here and there.
Any other questions or, thank you. There is a, kind of a point to trying to wrap up whatever loose ends there may or may not be, and frankly, it's, it's a reaction to your letter, Jeff, concerning the amount of time that this process has taken. And I'm, I'll speak for myself, I'm all about giving people an answer, whether it's a good answer or bad answer, as quickly as possible. And I'm not suggesting that the, the answer will be good or bad, but for the record, even if we had every bit of information we needed, we can't act on this thing. Right now, there is one lot there. You're looking to carve it up. So for the record, there are two outstanding issues, one of which is partially taken care of, as I understand it, is the definitive has been filed for, although there are pieces that still need to be completed on that. And then from a review standpoint, it makes sense not to do anything until we know where the CONCOM is, because that may or may not change what, what has to be put where, floodplains and.
Do we have the ability to close the public hearing, or are you?
Well, the problem with that is, if in fact, there is a need for information as a result of the Conservation Commission, we've closed the public hearing, we'd have to start all over again, as far as process is concerned. The whole point of a public hearing is to take in information. If there's new information that may be coming when the hearing is closed, that doesn't serve your purpose. I don't want to speak for the board. I can speak for myself. As soon as that information is in, I think we have examined this to a full extent, and I think we'd be prepared to, to act on it, assuming there's no surprises coming from the Conservation Commission, and filing of the definitive. But I just wanted to, to air my concern that there may be a perception that somehow we were dragging our feet on this. And even if that were true, it would be covered by the fact that there's been no definitive filed, so we couldn't act on it anyway. So I just wanted to get that out there. And again, I wanted to clear up if there were any stormwater issues that needed to be addressed. It sounds as though there's some, you know, minor corrections or clarifications, and this thing is pretty much done, absent some possible impact from Conservation. So, again, if that's not the, the feeling of the board, please correct me.
No, I agree, Joe. I think, I think we've covered topics and have answered everybody's questions, I think, to date, so.
Extensively.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. So if there's, is there anything else that you think got to be mentioned as part of this?
I just, yeah, I want to request that the Horsley and Witten review, follow-up review be finalized based on what's been submitted, as soon as possible, so that we can respond to that prior to the Conservation Hearing. You know, we want to have as much back and forth as we can prior to the Conservation Meeting, that's all.
Just, in terms of our meetings, what do we have after the 28th? Again, next, the 22nd?
February 5th and.
Okay, so, potentially, I don't know if the CONCOM is going to be wrapped up as of the 28th, we could act on this on the 5th, but assuming we'd have to have the definitive done by then as well, but anyway. So if there's nothing else on this special permit, I would entertain a motion to continue it to the, our next meeting.
So moved.
Which was the 20th, excuse me, the 22nd. There's been a motion on the 2nd, any further discussion? All in favor of a continuance to?
Was there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard one. Maybe there was two motions.
I'll second it though.
Okay, apologize.
I don't think that was actually said a second.
Okay, there's been a motion and now a second, to continue to January 22nd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, and if we could now open the hearing, the continuance of the hearing on special permit 481, which ostensibly is building seven. And again, for the record, there was no discussion on, on this, notwithstanding the fact that it opened at our last meeting.
So the next special permit we submitted and site plan was for building number seven. That's this building located on the master plan. Again, it's across from what we've been discussing, but it's not part of this Phase Two. It also is situated on its own lot, so no lot lines are changing as part of building seven. And as you can see on this map I just stepped down here, it's this exact parcel with no change. So what it is, it's another warehouse facility. It's 130,000 square feet. Has a single entrance off of Leonard Street to the north. Enters the employee parking area with an entrance on the front, as well as access to a loading area at the back right of the parcel. We do have some trailer spaces situated there. Similar to the other projects, there's conservation-related areas, there's the floodplain, again, on the site, that comes around both sides. There's the 100-foot buffer zone, it's the yellow line that goes through the site, as well as a riverfront area for the project. We have identified those areas through a notice of intent with Conservation. Again, we plan to meet the performance standards for wetlands, and we have also, as a result of the email request on the 20th, was a, that we submit the alternatives analysis for this project. What we have is, we have some work in the riverfront area. This little piece, as well as this basin, is in between the 100-foot and 200-foot riverfront area. And what we did was provided alter, economic alternatives analysis for that work, which actually resulted, we made a, a change from what's been submitted. You know, and I'll put this one down, so we can see both. So we made a relatively minor change. So what we did was actually modify the building slightly, took a piece off the building, and we're able to bring this driveway in, kind of straighten it up. And what you'll see now, the riverfront area comes completely out of where that location of the driveway is, as well in the alternatives analysis is, and originally, I tried to design a basin closer to the loading docks up, up in this area. But what that is, this is the tree line, so it's, putting a basin there requires a significant, you know, cutting of trees, and this is mature tree, this is, you know, real forested area, 100-year-old massive 36-inch trees. So instead, this area is completely in the grassed mode area that's been maintained for the project. I do have a picture if you want to see that. So by citing the basin out here, partially in the riverfront area, it's, it's an allowed putting basins, as long as you provide the alternatives analysis, putting basins within the riverfront area is allowed. I presented this to the Conservation Agent, and she was generally agreeable that it's a good solution to put the basin here versus in the back. So I feel we've met the requirements of an alternatives analysis with that slight revision of pulling that driveway in, as well as there, again, is some floodplain modification, this, this small arc right coming through here, but we've provided the required compensatory storage. We do already have an initial Horsley-Witten review on this project. We, the direction of Paul and Jennifer, we wanted to make sure that alternatives analysis was appropriate before wrapping up some of those technical details in their review, but we feel we've, will easily be able to comply with those initial, those remaining comments regarding drainage and the site itself.
Mark, in terms of the structure, what's the thought on drainage for the roof going towards the back or the, the lower point?
This, most likely will have a, it's, it's a, generally a flat roof, but if they do, you know, pitch, we have, we're able to drain out the front and out the back, so there'll be roof drains along the front, roof drains along the back, so, pretty standard roof drainage.
Mark, did you put that other board up? I'm more concerned with actually with, oh, I'm sorry, that, there was, there was something that had.
The aerial?
Kind of an aerial of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
If you will.
Yeah.
Really, what's, what's there is any sort of residential that the docks are facing, the truck docks are facing, it's far away, so that nearest house here, it looks like well over 1,000 feet.
But.
And there's a natural wetland that can buffer that's in between.
And unless my orientation is, is off, the, the change where you're now leaving mature trees is, is an added buffer that heretofore didn't exist under your other plan. Okay, thank you.
And the, the building does meet all other zoning. We've provided the required 100-foot. Oh, yeah, that's the old one. We've provided the 100-foot, when you have an industrial property up against residential, you have a 100-foot buffer, so we've provided that both on both sides, even though there's really nothing, you know, close, even the, the condos up and back are hundreds of feet even beyond the property line. So we have provided that, and, as well as a gravel access, fire access around the property, but no other, no parking, no loading in that.
Driveway entrance is about 160 feet, and then we narrowed to a width of about 30 throughout the remaining part of the site.
And Building Commissioner Carmichael and I met with the applicants earlier, and we think 30 feet's fine here. It's a standalone building, it's not going to have a lot of vehicle traffic, or truck traffic, but not, it's not like on the south side, so we think 30 feet. And it gives the opportunity to not impact into the environmentally sensitive areas.
Comments?
This one's, yeah, because it's one building, it seems so much simpler than the other. Yeah, it's not off the main road, it's, there's a lot of, yeah, this is a much more simpler, you know, overall. Plan. I think, interesting peer review, but at this point, I don't have further questions.
Ms. Bernardo's here, if you have any questions for her, please.
For the record, Janet Bernardo, Professional Engineer with the Horsley-Witten Group. And I did review this design, and now I have to go through my whole stormwater blurbie because, you know, I did it. So the, this lot seven, basically, the majority of the site is currently like a big field, and there's some wooded, wooded area that's being impacted, but pretty much they stayed inside the, the field. There's infiltration basin to the, is this the one to the west? There's, there's, no, north area, which is always throwing me off.
North is up on this one, so.
Yeah, all right, that helps.
There we go.
So, so this large infiltration basin over here, which is basically, this is the 50 feet outside of the wetland line, and takes the roof runoff, takes five quarters of the roof runoff, goes to this basin. And so they don't have that pre-treatment because it's just going to infiltration basin, the roof runoff is considered clean, and so this is, that works. There's three quarters, three sections, if you divide this into 16 sections.
Eight? Okay. You said five quarters, and I was.
No, no, I know, I know, sorry. No, I know, I know, sorry. Five sections.
125%.
No, five sections, five sections or eight, eight sections of five. Five in one direction, three sections, three sections go to this basin up in the front, as well as the parking lot loading dock. And so all of the runoff here, this goes to either catch basins or a storm scepter. So that meets their pre-treatment going into the infiltration basin to the southwest, west, east. The smaller basin in the bottom is for this parking lot. And this also has catch basins, storm scepters for the pre-treatment going into this infiltration basin. There have been two bio-retention areas of the, are they still there?
Yes.
So there's two bio-retention areas, but one of our comments is basically to give more information about those bio-retention areas. Because we like them, we want them, but we just didn't have enough information to verify that they met all of the standards. So as we talked about the last time, there's 10 standards that the applicant needs to meet to meet the stormwater, the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So standard one is to make sure they're not causing erosion to the wetland. There are wetlands all the way around, but they're designed, pretty much infiltrates everything. And so their flow, even for the 100-year flow, one of them has .99, .99 cubic feet per second discharging for 100-year. But the other one, the other two basins don't discharge anything at all, which is great. So that meets their standard one requirement. Standard two requirement, basically, in our letter dated December 14th, we have a few items that either we looking for more information, but relatively minor edits that the applicant should be able to address. Basin number two, okay, can you tell, this is three? This is three, this is one, two, three? This is how I have them designed. South of the building is one, this is two, this is three. So basin one basically has a few minor edits. Basin two needed a mounding analysis, which is the more critical item. But if they, you've pulled this one out of the riverfront as well, or is this one still in the riverfront? You just pulled the driveway out?
Yeah, the basin is still partial.
Okay, so this needs a mounding analysis, but they're 3.1 feet above groundwater. So mounding is if it's between two and four, two, zero and two. So they need a mounding analysis. And basin three seem to be designed adequately. That there are a couple of vernal pools that the Conservation Commission is going to be concerned about. So the vernal pools, they want to make sure that they're not drying them out, because you don't want to dry up a vernal pool. You want to make sure that it still gets plenty of water at the right seasons for the little critters to hatch and move around. So that's one of the concerns is like when you take all of the water and you infiltrate it, you got to still make sure that it's getting there. And maybe because the basins, the vernal pools are within the wetland, it's not as big of a concern. But the Conservation Commission may have comments about the vernal pools. Standard three requires recharge, and because they basically infiltrated everything on site, they're meeting their recharge requirement. Standard four has to do with total suspended solids and water quality. So they have to provide various means for pre-treatment, which is the catch basins and the storm scepters. And again, the bio-retention area, we need a little bit more information to make sure that they're meeting that requirement. Standard five is basically for land uses of higher potential pollutant loads. And that's if it has more than 1,000 vehicle trips per day, or it's a junkyard or a gas station or something that's really going to cause concerns with pollutants to the groundwater. And this likely will not have, be considered a lepple, but they're treating it as such with the truck loading. So that means that they had to have specific stormwater features, stormwater practices, and they are meeting those. So infiltration basins are an acceptable practice, as long as they have the 44% pre-treatment, which is the catch basins and the storm scepter make it 44%. One of our questions is just to make sure that the storm scepters have been sized appropriately. Standard six is regarding a critical area, and because this is within a DEP zoned two, that makes it a critical area, that ACEC. And so they need to comply with the similar requirements, practices that are used for the zone, for the lepple, they need the land use for higher potential pollutant loads, they also use for critical areas. So that kind of works in their favor. That also goes into the drinking water regulations. And as long as they meet the stormwater management standards according to the Stormwater Handbook, that the drinking water regulations feel like that they comply. You know, that's kind of the ruling. So as long as they meet all of the requirements, which they basically are with a few tweaks here and there. Looking for some additional details on the hydroCAD calculation information. They don't require, they don't qualify for standard seven as it's a redevelopment. Standard eight is required for erosion and sedimentation control. And they have some, and they're providing a silt fence and a double line if it's within 50 feet of the wetland. So that's reasonable, looking for detail on tree protection. And making sure that they don't stockpile any material within the bordering land subject to flooding. So items that are relatively easy for them to address at this stage. The standard nine has to do with the operation and maintenance plan. And I think that they should require, have a simple plan, basically to hand over to the tenant, the property owner, that says, here are your infiltration basins, here's your catch basins, here are your storm scepters. A very simple sketch so that somebody is actually going to know, find these various items and know how to maintain them. It goes along with their actual report. And something for a snow plow operator, basically to say, this is where the snow is being plowed. Don't put it in the wetlands, don't put it in the vernal pools, don't put it in the stormwater practices, don't put it in the floodplain. You know, so that it's very clear where the snow will go. They provided for standard 10, it's an illicit discharge statement, they provided that. My comment 11 has to do with the hydraulic calculations and the closed drainage system. There's a few items that were not labeled, but they're relatively minor miscellaneous comments that can be addressed easily. And 12 is our additional comments. The low-impact development requirements that the town is looking for, they basically were looking to minimize. There's a number of comments that they checked off in the stormwater report, minimizing disturbance to existing trees and shrubs. And I just recommending that they document how many they're actually removing. Looks like they're really trying to stay outside of the wooded area, so that would qualify. They stated that they're using country drainage, but I couldn't quite figure out what that meant because looked like there was a lot of catch basins. They're proposing bio-retention cells, which again, I've asked for more information to just clarify exactly how there's waters getting to them, what they're going to be sized, how they're going to be pre-treated, and what's going to be planted in there. And they do have some compensatory storage because they are within the floodplain. And basically, this is, this pink line, this pink line is your 100, is your, is your borderland subject to flooding?
Yeah, yeah.
So the pink, the pink line, I didn't know it went into your building. It always goes into your building?
That's the, we, when we took this out, we added four feet, so it, I guess it does now. But we can identify that as compensatory storage, if that's not an issue.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't realize, yeah, because
We were trying to not lose square footage, so this, it bumped out four feet this entire length. We can adjust that back if we have to. That little chunk out of the building, I think was 2,500 square feet, so.
So the original plan had a little bit of a smaller impact to the borderlands subject to flooding, which they were proposing to excavate an area north of the building. One of the requirements is that it is hydrologically connected to the water body that it serves. So I was asking for them to verify that these two areas are both hydrologically connected to the same watershed, because this is a different, slightly different BBW than this area. But maybe it's all one big gigantic area, but this is the Purnell Stream, and where does it go? So, so that was what my question was. Conservation's frustrated about the building five and the borderlands subject to flooding and that it's in there. And so I'm not sure what Conservation's going to say about, about this little nugget here. But something that I
We can
Hadn't, hadn't thought about before, because I looked at the compensatory flood storage for this project, and it seemed reasonable. We'll look at it again with these changes.
Mark, did that shift the whole parking area over that four feet also?
Yeah, but again, that didn't, yeah.
Everything shifted.
We can change, you know, if it turns out to be an issue, that's, you know, probably about 80 square feet in that little chunk.
Yeah, I mean, every, every square foot counts. So the intention with your bylaws and with Massachusetts requirements is that there's no impact to the floodplain. And so the compensatory storage just has to be accounted for. Conservation Commission really doesn't like to see it impacted at all. So that's one of the concerns with buildings one through five is that compensatory storage. So that's one reason why they really want to understand what's going on before you guys close. So I appreciate that, that didn't happen. I'm sure they'll appreciate that it didn't happen.
Because you're saying building five is building seven, or you're
Yeah, this is building seven. No, building five is just the one that they've talked about a lot before. Like I looked at this and, and they barely touched it. And so I wasn't, I didn't have a concern about the floodplain and the compensatory storage on here, because it seemed like it was just a little, little circular area, and then it was being comprehen, no, that's a word, compensated for, and it seemed reasonable. Now that it's in the building, that's just something that might come up with Conservation. Only because I know that they've been talking about it for the other property, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Do we have a calculation of, I'll ask this of Mark. How much square footage of floodplain is occupied by that sliver of building?
That's, I don't have exactly. That was my 80 square foot comment, but what, if, if having that piece of building in that area is an issue, we'll make that revision. You know, I think balancing the riverfront area versus the, but we'll, we'll make that adjustment.
But can that be compensated by the grading of the carved-out corner? In other words, if, if 100 square feet is now occupied by the corner of the building, that now green area, couldn't that floodplain capacity be created by grading that at a different level?
I'm confident I could provide the compensatory storage for that piece of
And I believe he can. I'm not doubting that he can provide it. I'm just concerned with what Plan, Conservation Commission's going to say about it. We also reviewed the groundwater protection, as this is the Canoe River Soul Source aquifer. And similar to the critical area in zone two that we talked about for the stormwater standards, basically, you know, there's some specific things like telling the tenant or property owner what they are prohibited from storing on site, so that there's no chemicals that all of a sudden slip and fall into the catch basins, which then go into the infiltration basins, which then impact the aquifer. But there's a few items like that that can be addressed relatively straightforward. And making sure that they meet the stormwater standards therefore allows them to comply with the drinking water standards as well. And then they'll be, we received the information, I guess, December 21st? Is that what you said you sent it? Right before Christmas. And Amy Ball will be looking at all of the wetlands information for the Conservation Commission. So that meeting again is December 28th. I know stormwater is exciting.
Any questions of Janet while she's here?
This was a much easier site than the other one. Much more straightforward.
Thank you for the review.
Thank you. Bless you. So in terms of next steps, you'll be responding to some of those comments and All right. Any other questions or comments while we're at this phase?
I just have one. The email from Paul and Jennifer also had a topic regarding building seven. And it basically was a statement that they wanted us to respond to the riverfront alternatives analysis before we proceed with the remaining drainage revisions. So I'd like potentially a response from Horsley-Witten on the alternatives analysis as soon as possible, so that we can proceed with the I mean, I Okay, I mean, I'm comfortable proceeding, but So just if, we just don't want to wait till the 28th to get that feedback on that. We'd like to respond fully to all the comments for the 28th.
And trust that to doable? At this point, I suppose the only other thing to do is continue this at least to the 22nd. Although I don't know if there'll be anything forthcoming between the 26th in advance of the 22nd that might not have to be changed by the 28th CONCON meeting. But nevertheless, is there a motion to continue this to January 22nd?
Some vote.
Is there a second discussion? Are you none, all in favor of a continuance to January 22nd? Say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Thank you.
Thank you.
It can't be this simple, but it looks like we're done for tonight.
Paul, can I just ask a question just on the summary of building seven? It's making references in the special permits, but it's referencing lots, you know, three, four, five. Are those pertaining to building seven?
I'm sorry.
This was DTED review number one, SP 41, specifically building seven.
Right. It should only be for
Item three, project requires special permits for the following reasons, and there's references to lots, you know, three, four. This is, this is also lot seven, right?
Well, it's just known as building seven.
Yeah, okay, all right, there was other references.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was, no, that's, that's a mistake on my part, my apologies.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was intended to be there.
No, this is, this is all just for building seven.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yep, that was
It's not related to the actual
No, it's
But even here, it's not related to the actual structure of the
What lot number is building seven, or is there, are we calling that? What are we using for lot number?
It's labeled on the
Okay, but we're not calling it lot number Okay, yeah, that's right, yeah, I saw lot seven and building seven, and then Paul's write-up was referencing three, four, and five.
Yeah, no, that was, I, a copy error.
Okay.
I'll revise that, sorry. But it's still, the corrections, it is still correct that those special permits are needed because they're in those environmentally sensitive areas.
Is there any other business to come before the board tonight?
No, sir.
Are there any other pending, nothing else? In the works are pending, or?
I should say, as a reminder, next Monday, we have the town meeting. And just to let you know that the additional language that you all had on the solar Town Council was fine with it.
Okay.
So it's moved on, it's in the article. So January 14th, we have So it's moved on, it's in the article, so January fourteenth, we have the town meeting, which is also important, because we've received the special permanent site plan for the solar facility, uh, on the Cranberry Bog on Bay Road. So, uh, if it passes town meeting on the fourteenth, we will certainly be going forward with it. Uh, but the application is in-house now, and, uh, right now, we're reviewing it. Conservation Commission is asking for a peer review for it, certainly because of the potential wetland impacts. Um, so, uh, you'll be getting it, but before the Conservation Commission has a chance to review it, so we'll be involved with that, so.
All right. Okay, so Paul, it sounds like they're meeting in the opposite week that we're meeting, from, since they're meeting on the twenty-eighth, so.
Right, they, they.
They'll have a lot on their agenda as well, so.
They were going to meet on the fourteenth until the special town meeting. So it pushed back a few things, so. Uh, but, right, so that's, we're just coordinating. Jennifer and I are coordinating on this project, and as well as Blue Star, so.
Good.
So that's a, it's a big one, it's a pretty, it's a sizable, uh, solar facility. And starting to look at the site plans, it's, you'll, it's, it's pretty striking how many panels there are. But I guess first step, we'll see if it passes through town meeting.
Yeah.
How many residents abud that on Bay Road?
One hundred and sixty-one.
That's a few.
Hundred and sixty-one?
Certified each letter.
Hundred and sixty-one for, uh.
Okay, right, a few went into Easton, but.
I think there's a total of like sixteen for Easton, if that.
Right.
But there's a hundred and sixty-one, because it's, it's Bay Road and Fairleigh. It's both properties, so you get the abutters from Bay Road, and Bay Road's really the big one, because that box is so huge. But, and then whatever the property they own on Fairleigh, that's, that makes it branch out, so there's even more.
So there was actually two abutters lists, so about a hundred and sixty.
Okay.
So that was pretty sizable. That's, that's pretty large for us. A couple of other initiatives that were, uh, one that I'm continuing that my predecessor, Tabitha, started, which was the effort to get our zoning map digitized.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're looking for, looking to continue to work with SERPID, uh, the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development Group, who helped put it together. But as you might not be shocked by, that the digitizing is pointing out some interesting scenarios on our current zoning map.
Yep.
And so I'm working to figure out a path, a few steps that we would like, because I really would like to get that map digitized.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking that we should probably, as a first step, digitize it just as a literal translation with, even with the parcels, as they currently are with split zoning and, uh, because there's a lot of properties that are. But we get a lot of requests for information, and it would be really helpful to get it. Because I, I'm sort of embarrassed to admit, there were a few, there have been a few times properties of, people have come in inquiring about a property, and we can't tell from the zoning map exactly where it is, because it's not parcel specific, and some just happen to be right on the bu- border between two zoning districts. And it'll be real important that we can put it online, so everyone can see it. And then that'll really help us all figure out where the problems are with it. So that's moving forward. We'll have more to update, hopefully, in, in the meeting in two weeks. The other effort, uh.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Um, because I think it's important for a couple of reasons. I, I think it's important that we take our, our zoning map, warts and all, uh, digitize it, whether it, and it's not that unusual for zoning lines to go through properties, um, you know, whether it's here or elsewhere.
Right.
I'm not saying it's, it's, it's the best approach, clearly it's not. But nevertheless, I think we need to take our existing zoning map, warts and all, digitize it. It would have to be approved at town meeting.
Right.
And then start cleaning up those, uh, problem areas. Um, that's important for a number of reasons, thus, not the least of which, uh, you know, the questions that come in, I'm sure, on a continuous basis, what zone am I in, um, you know.
Right.
Be able to answer that. But for more, a more pragmatic, and speaking personally, a, a matter of trust perspective, uh, we went to the finance committee last year, and ultimately town meeting, promising them that is a byproduct of an additional, uh, part-time staff person. As it turned out, we've done some other things, but nevertheless.
Right.
We made a commitment to both the finance committee and town meeting, uh, to do this. So, um, I think it's important that we follow up on it, and, you know, we, we can't help the fact that there are some imperfections, but I think digitizing even the imperfections is a step forward.
Right, and thank you for that. And, uh, so my goal is to get it on the, in the spring town meeting. But then have a, have a game plan ready to talk to folks, because I think another important factor to move, really move forward is, uh, we need legal descriptions for, for properties. We, we do not have them, and, you know, that's going to take some time to, you know, we would probably need to hire out for that, hire a consultant to, you know, many, most towns will use, have legal descriptions that they can draw their zoning around. It's just how it's done. It's a, it's a much more effective and clear and transparent way of showing where the properties are. I mean, we have, right now, our zoning map, in some cases, where it's showing, say, commercial down one forty or one twenty-three, it, it has a color, and it doesn't always say how far out that color goes. Sometimes it will say five hundred feet, six hundred feet, but other times it's not, and I, I can't say with any certainty that a property is, how far out that line goes, how, with the coloring. So, um, this will take some time, but it'll, it'll help us get the most accurate and give people the best sense of what they have. And it'll, again, it'll help, I think that just makes our process more transparent and give us, uh, gives us the best information. The, the other initiative we're looking into at this point is, um, our, our, uh, town, uh, our, uh, town master plan just turned twenty-one years old, uh, was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. It, it has a license now and can, you know, go order drinks. But, uh, we're looking at working, we're looking into working with SERPID to, uh, update that plan. Um, we've, SERPID has some grant money available, and there's some money, other grant money available potentially through the Department of Revenue we'd like to look at, but that may also require us to go to town meeting and ask for additional funding, but I would love to be able to get as much of a grant match as possible. But it would probably be about a two-year process, but, uh, it, it would give us a great opportunity to work with the community, to figure out our needs going forward. So it, it's, um, always a good opportunity to, for, you know, whether it's the, the planning board, or you all select, uh, an advisory group to help, uh, with providing input into the plan and into the process. But, uh, I, I would hope that the process that we go through is a, uh, has an extensive amount of public engagement to help us determine, you know, where does Norton go into the future? So those are a few things we're working on, but, um, they, they're starting to get launched, but obviously I need to make sure that the board is, is okay with it. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I guess I'm, I'm getting near my fifth month here, so. Well, I feel like I, I've needed to do a better job of being a bit more assertive, but obviously the reality is I had, there was a lot of catching up to do, and then, you know, this little project landing the week before I started, so. Um, but I want to make sure that we're keeping certain, certain, you know, the initiatives going forward, and just keep us involved and, and getting the public, you know, more engaged with these, with these long-term initiatives.
Paul, where does the visioning effort stand as far as the town center goes? Is there, is there any update on that?
Tim, do you want to?
We had a meeting this morning.
Oh, geez, timely question, I guess. I didn't even know that, Tim, I didn't, I didn't set you up.
I believe we're setting up another public meeting potentially in March.
Right.
Okay.
Um, to go over land use items.
Right, we, today, today we discussed zoning and design aspects. Uh, so we were looking at, um, the beginning of the types of standards that we really should look at in terms of the village, center, uh, district. Whether we create a new zoning district specifically for the village center, do, or potentially an overlay. But looking at parking standards, looking at uses allowed, or really uses that we should not allow in that area, um, you know, our other dimensional standards to see if we can create regulations that will promote the, that vision of what people are wanting to see. Because as you recall, when we, uh, met a few months ago, the public was weighing in on design, and, uh, they were largely telling us that they want to see more of the traditional New England downtown, buildings close to the street, maybe two stories, uh, buildings, you know, with good window treatments to attract people walking and so forth. The other issue still that we have to work through is the intersection, the transportation aspect. Um, we're still working through it, uh, because there isn't an option that is a clear winner that doesn't have some adverse trade-off. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we're still looking, but we're at the point now where our consultants are doing, is actually providing more of an engineering review to see where, where those turns can occur.
Yeah, more at the radii and the turning rocks and things like that.
Right, right.
Yeah, math rules and regs, yeah.
We've, we've presented to MassDOT, um, they've given us general support for the ideas, but we still have to come back with the, with the turning radiuses and radii and that. So that's, that's a longer term issue, but, but we're still on target for a report to be finalized by June. So we'll need to get them back here, the consultants back here, to, to talk with you all and get it caught up to speed. But, you know, looking at a February, March open house.
Has there been any talk about eliminating one of the lights and creating only one intersection right there?
There've, there've been a few different alternatives discussed. I think that's been in a couple of the alternatives. Where that's situated is still and subject to a number of different questions. I think the way I view it is if fixing that intersection was easy, it would have been done fifteen years ago, so.
Right.
It's been discussed.
Maybe longer, yeah.
Well, it's been discussed, I think, since the invention of a car, but.
Right.
One of the things that troubles me when you mention, uh, MassDOT and having had, had an awful lot of experience, but I've had enough, and reminded, and I'm, I'm probably butchering it, there's an expression that perfection is the hobgoblin of, of, uh, progress.
Of the good, yeah.
Or the, of the good.
The enemy of the good.
My, my point is that, uh, in many cases, uh, in, in order to comply with MassDOT regulations, you can't do anything.
Hmm.
Uh, and, and I think there has to be an acceptance of the fact that that will not be an intersection. Certainly isn't now and never will be an intersection that complies completely with MassDOT regulations. And I think you have to start with that premise and accept less than perfection in order to make progress.
Right.
It is a very constrained area between destroyed buildings and, and it's just, it's.
Right.
It's so difficult.
Paul said, they've generally been supportive, so it's working through and finding common ground for discussion. Are the plans still up at the library, or they've been taken down, I think?
They, they've all been taken down, the surveys, right. Uh, uh, for the surveys they have.
Okay.
Information is still posted online for people to review, so.
Still a website with all the intersection mockups?
Yeah.
And I'm sure.
If you Google Norton Village Center.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and we have it. But again, it's going to be a trade-off. Uh, you know, the two alternatives we've zeroed in on, one is the, the Taunav realignment, but you're looking at up to three properties being affected by it. Uh, but we're looking to see if there's possible S-curves in there that could help eliminate it. So the engineering firm that we have will look at that, um, which would include the church property.
Right.
Uh, so we would have to obviously work closely with them. Uh, the other option is the Mansfield alignment, which would go right through the, the Village Green. And these options were based on the survey results from the public, so, uh, I have to admit, I was surprised how many people voted to support the Mansfield alignment. Typically, when you talk about impacting a park, people usually say no. But, um, in this case, we could also add parkland back with the land that was, that is currently, uh, the roadway. But that's an option. Engineering-wise, it's an easier option, but it's, um, but it's a historic district, it's a historic park.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's, has challenges with it, and, uh, we'll just have to keep, you know, looking forward. I, I think we'll probably be focusing on the Taunav requirement, or, or, our option, to see where, uh, where that can take us, and then we would be looking at acquis-, you know, a lot more land acquisition costs to do that. But.
It's continuing, and we'll have a.
Yeah.
The, the zoning and design will probably be the shorter term option, hopefully the easier one, although that's never an easy option in my experience. But, uh, we have a really, it's, it's Hoseley Witten, uh, with some subcontractors, but it's, it's their planning end of it, actually right down and right near City Hall in Providence, so. Uh, they have some really good engine, uh, architects and planners working on it, who have quite a bit of design experience, and have done this work in some other, in other towns. So I hope that if we can get the standards in this year, we could see some new development going on there that could create some synergy for that area and get some more support, particularly for whatever mobility improvements we come up with. Because while the road is a big fix, we still need to make sure that it's walk-friendly and bike-friendly. And, and of course, uh, transit there, you know, there's a transit stop there. We're hoping that GATRA will, uh, uh, enhance their facility there. So we want to make sure it's done all comprehensively.
Great.
Any other comments, concerns, or questions, Tim?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.